will be a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to request the reading of the notice, please.
Organizational meeting, adjourned organizational meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room, 504th Street, Wausau, on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, and the agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you, and I would like to request everyone put their phones and other electronic devices on silent or vibrate as to not to be an interruption in the meeting, and I thank you for your assistance. And we will move and proceed to roll call, and I ask the clerk to open the meeting, and everyone please sign in. And we're waiting on Supervisor Shafinsky. Please sign in. And we are present, everyone's present, thank you. And we will, I would like to welcome all the visitors that we have, including the viewing audience, and thank them for their interest in Marathon County governance. And we will move on to the committee appointments, but before we get to that, I would like to read a brief statement to everyone. I want to begin by expressing my sincere thank you, and thanks to the staff for assistance in getting the committee appointments out to all of the supervisors. With that said, please know that these nominations were a result of significant deliberation on the part of myself, on the part of the Vice Chair McEwen, and Administrator Leonard. As you review these appointments before you, I want to take just a moment to explain to you the thought process that guided the development of these appointments. Simply put, the appointments are the best attempt to capitalize on the board's most significant asset, that being yourselves. We are fortunate to serve as the policy body for organization with over 700 employees across 24 departments that deliver approximately 1,000 programs on behalf of the Marathon County residents, ensuring that members are in a position where they believe that they can contribute and having a plan for all members to learn more about the areas in which they are less familiar is critical to building a high-functioning board. In making the committee appointments, below the Chair, Vice Chair, the Administrator, and I were driven by four goals. One, to ensure that every supervisor received their first or second preference from their standing committee appointments. To ensure that every standing committee has some level of membership with previous experience serving on that committee. Make a concerted effort to have some level of membership consistency from program committees to subcommittees and their standing committees. To ensure that every member received at least one appointment to a program committee in the area that they have an interest. While most certainly there will be some supervisors that would have preferred a different appointment, I am proud to say that despite the complex interdependencies of all the various committees, I believe that we've accomplished each of those goals and had when we began the process. All supervisors have received their first or second choice on their standing committee. All standing committees have three or more members with history on serving on that committee. Most standing committees have direct membership from their subordinate committees. Every supervisor received an appointment either today, or they will at a May meeting to a subordinate committee in an area that they expressed a direct interest, or an area similar to their direct interest. Thank you again for the opportunity to offer these appointments to you, and I respectfully request that you approve them. We will move on to the committee appointments, and we will be taking the committee appointments, Items B7 through B7A through Items B7Q. Is there a motion? The motion is by Supervisor Jeong, and the second is by Supervisor Mirage. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Dickinson is acknowledged.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment I really have to make is while there's, you know, minor debatable kinds of appointments that could be dug through in some of the commissions and committees and such. I do want to point out one thing and something I've spoken to corporate counsel about, and that is the executive committee is actually missing one voting member based upon these appointments, and that is because the Vice Chair, McEwen, is also the Chair of Infrastructure. And so the votes in executive will not be at 10, they will be at 9. And so I would just make the comment that I don't know why that occurred, and so I would ask why that happened, and is that something that can be changed? Thank you.
Well, why that happened was in looking at the individual, again, the previous history of individuals that have served on that committee and their experience level, the rules allow the Vice Chair to serve on a standing committee as a standing committee chair, and so that was my recommendation. Okay. Supervisor Baker.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. While I'm quite happy with the appointments that I received myself, I'm concerned, last meeting, we heard several times about how important the committee work is, and the HR Finance Committee is one of the most important, if not the most important, committee, and with the makeup that was appointed to the HR Finance Committee, it does not represent the board as a whole, and I personally would have to question whatever came out of that committee, the way the makeup is now, so I will be voting no on confirming.
Supervisor Langenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify the motion itself. The motion is to approve agenda items B7A through B7P and not through B7Q, what I had heard before.
Excuse me, it would be through B7Q. P, excuse me, P.
Okay, thank you.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Supervisor Niemeyer, please vote. Thank you, and we will proceed to display the results. And the motion is carried. And we will move on to Item B8, and that is appointments by County Administrator, Items B8A through Items B8F, excuse me, B8H. Is there a motion? Motion by Vice Chair McEwen, and second by Supervisor Jeong. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will then proceed to vote. And we'll declare the vote. And the motion is carried and is unanimous, and now we are down to Item B9, election of the Member-at-Large for the Executive Committee. And in this case, we have two positions by rule that are open for the Executive Committee, and I would like to open the nominations at this time. Vice Chair McEwen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Supervisor Dickinson.
Is there a second for Supervisor Dickinson? And seconded by Supervisor Arstad. Is there any other nominations? Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Mask, is there a second to Supervisor Mask? Then the motion is seconded by Supervisor Dickinson. Any other nominations for Executive Committee at-large membership?
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Hardinger.
Supervisor Hardinger. Is there a second to Supervisor Hardinger? Supervisor Shafinsky with a second. Is there any other nominations? Supervisor Krausey.
I'd like to nominate Yi Ling Jiang.
Is there a second for Supervisor Jeong? Seconded by Supervisor Lemmer. Any other nomination? Any other nominations? Supervisor Jeong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I am very honored by the motion, I would not accept the motion, I would not accept the nomination to the Executive Committee, thank you, though.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll declare the nominations closed, and we will, these are, again, a secret ballot, and I would like to instruct each supervisor to place on the ballot their two choices, first and their second choice, as the supervisors. Again, you have Supervisor Dickinson, Supervisor Mask, and Supervisor Hardinger as candidates for the at-large membership to the Executive Committee. Supervisor Krausey.
Yes, I don't know who Supervisor Hardinger is. I was wondering if that person could stand up.
Well, if any of the candidates want to address the board prior to the ballot being taken, they were given an opportunity. Does either of the three, any of the three candidates wish to address the board? Supervisor Van Cray.
Mr. Chair, are we supposed to vote for one or two?
Two.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cavelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for IT. Can we switch out of the meeting and into the packet without logging out?
Yes, you should be able to. And the two that have won the election to the Executive Committee is Supervisor Dickinson and Supervisor Mask. So those will be the additional at-large members. We move on to the consent agenda, item C10, approval of the minutes through C14A2. Motion by Vice Chair McEwen and seconded by Supervisor Mask. Any discussion? Supervisor Langenhahn.
I bumped it with my hand. I withdraw my request to speak.
Any, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we're waiting on Supervisor Rosenberg to vote, please. And every vote is in, so we will proceed to the tally, and the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to resolutions from Human Resources Finance and Property Committee, Item D15, approve the 2022 budget transfers for Marathon County Department of Appropriations. Resolution 29-22, this is a budget transfer and does require a 2/3 majority vote of the board. Motion by Supervisor Jeong and seconded by Supervisor Leahy. Any discussion? Supervisor Vensky, you hit motion. Okay. All right, any, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we will show the vote, vote is complete, and the motion is carried but is not unanimous. Thank you. And we will proceed to Item D16, resolution to provide for the sale of, not to exceed $19,225,000, General Obligation Healthcare Project Building Bonds 2022B, Resolution 31-22. Motion by Supervisor Leahy and seconded by Supervisor Jeong. Supervisor Sandalski is recognized.
Yeah, I got a question on that. For the, the total cap was 67 million, and if you add the two, the two bonds together, it was only 63,845. I was just wondering what that, the 3,155.
There's still one more phase of that renovation to go, and so that won't be done until 2024, so those will be bonded for later.
Okay, thank you.
And next we have Supervisor Shafinsky.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is regarding that project or sequence of projects. Where do we stand in terms of the project as a whole and keeping it under budget? Are we on track to finish that project under budget, over budget, or right on track? Do we have any way of having a running status on that?
Well, at this point, the estimates for this phase of the budget, or this phase of the project, the general has said that we're probably going to be over budget, and we also are over budget on the total project. Now, we did receive funds from the state to assist in that cost overrun. The state provided an additional $5 million to NCHC for this construction project for that phase, but it's anticipated that we may be an additional $3 million short because of the COVID, and the cost of everything in construction has gone up significantly. We won't know that for sure until this phase of the bidding comes in, in the middle of May. So it's bid, it's out for bids, those bids are due in May 20 something, and we'll know when those, when those bids come in, and then there'll be an additional request from North Central to this board for consideration on possible use of some ARPA funding to fill in that gap. Okay, next we have Supervisor Wilhelm.
I was curious, with the healthcare center, are we gonna, is it gonna increase the size so they can have more capacity for patients, or is it just gonna be a facelift?
So several things have, several things have taken place. There has been an expansion of services for, to include an inpatient youth hospital. We also are increasing the inpatient hospital rooms. Currently, a lot of those rooms that we have down there are double rooms. However, under most situations, double beds are not utilized. You can only utilize one bed if you have a male and female, and so this will expand to 16 beds, the number of inpatient hospital beds for the, when the renovation is complete. So we'll expand the services that are there.
And one other question now, we contract with Langley and Lincoln Counties?
Langley and Lincoln Counties are members of the tri-county entity, but the buildings are all Marathon County-owned.
Okay, so do we raise their rates?
The, the initial assessment was that the operations was going to pay for the, pay back the bonding, and we're dealing with those issues. I also chair the NCHC, North Central Healthcare Community Services Program Board, and we're working through some internal challenges as far as the financing, and hopes to get that back on track to be able to pay back the financing. And next we have Supervisor Marshall.
Thank you, Chair. Just wondering, with the $5 million from the state, did that come with any strings attached? I thought it was related to expanding the number of counties that North Central serves.
It does require that North Central Healthcare provide services to additional counties if the beds and availability is not being utilized by Marathon and/or Lincoln and Langley, and it is for a 10-year period. Supervisor Shafinsky.
Thank you, Chair. Understand that the overages are, you know, unforeseen events, there's no way we could have predicted that. My question is, as a result, do we have any options to scale back the project to fit back within the original budget? You know, tax dollars are tax dollars and wherever they come from, and, you know, it might be prudent to say, well, in light of the situation, maybe we scale back.
I would, I would, I would characterize where we're at in the product, in the project pretty much this way. It's like we decided that we're going to renovate the house, and we took the roof off, and now if we choose not to, we could choose not to put the roof back on, but that's probably not a wise thing to do, because I don't see the opportunity, we have one section of the inpatient hospital now renovated, and the other side of the, is unrenovated. And so for the programming to be able to be utilized and that full area of that inpatient hospital to be utilized efficiently and effectively, we need to finish the remodeling. And so we're on the, we're on the fourth phase of this, so the vast majority is in the final stages. The roughly $3 million that is the, really the final phase is parking lots. So I don't know that there's a lot of options and availability unless we want to go to, you know, granite parking lot. And the Administrator would like to also say a word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's a very good question, and I think the other part, just to build on what Chair Gibbs has referenced, we are meeting, I serve on the North Central Healthcare Executive Board and the intergovernmental agreement that this board approved earlier this year, reformulating. agreement that this Board approved earlier this year, reformulating that partnership with Lincoln, Langley, and Marathon. In my mind, I see the opportunity that is in front of us, to build on what Chair Gibbs references, really to sit down with North Central Healthcare, and we do have a meeting coming up in the near future to get additional information, to sit down and say, to your point, how do we protect tax dollars in terms of having to service the debt? If North Central needs to have a longer payback period, we can, we can handle that internally with our reserves and have North Central service that debt over a longer period as opposed to the twenty-year bond period. But we're gonna hopefully have additional details from North Central staff in the coming weeks and months. But your point about how do we protect those tax dollars and this being unforeseen, there certainly has been an impact on the cost of construction. The other piece we need to evaluate is, how do the services that are being delivered at North Central Healthcare, how have they been impacted by the pandemic? And what does that future look like for the revenue streams and the expense streams we're gonna have? Because as you can all imagine, we operate a nursing home, Marathon County has a nursing home, and North Central operates for a Mountview Care Center. That was significantly impacted by the pandemic on both the expense and revenue sides. But trying to stabilize those revenue streams and project out what that looked like to ensure that the debt is being serviced so it doesn't get added to the tax levy, one of the primary things we're gonna look at. But I'd love to stand here and tell you, hey, we have a plan, but we're still trying to understand what that's looking like. The construction side is, is a bit fluid, trying to understand what those cost overruns are looking like. But we do have a meeting Thursday with the current Executive Director of North Central to try to understand what the ask of the county may be. And I'm sure a request for American Rescue Plan Act funding is gonna be part of it. It's gonna be a complex answer to that problem.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will now proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried but is not unanimous. And we are down to item number seventeen, a resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation airport bonds, recovery zone facility bonds, series twenty-ten A, dated December tenth, twenty-ten, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-two. Just so everybody's aware, the airport receives some funding through ARPA and also the first program for COVID, and they're now using those funds to pay back. So we're paying off those bonds, the twenty-twenty-ten bonds early. And so we're eliminating interest on some of that debt and eliminating that debt. So that's what this resolution does. Motion by Supervisor Book and seconded by Supervisor Mask, is there any discussion? Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Mask with the motion and Supervisor Book with the second. Any discussion? And we will proceed. And the motion is carried and it is unanimous. Thank you. And we are down to announcements and/or requests. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with the various committee assignments. We do need signatures from HR Finance, Health and Human Services, and Public Safety. Also, part of the survey, there was various people that had requested mentors. At this point, we have five people that have volunteered to serve as mentors, but we have thirteen people that potentially requesting mentors. So I guess I would ask any returning supervisors if they're willing to serve as mentors, please, please extend information to me to allow me to provide and assign all of those people to mentors. Also, Chris Bergy, you know, after last Tuesday, we had a fire in the AV room back there, they did, he spent multiple days putting it back together in a temporary fashion. There's still challenges, but I think he's got, I think he and his Wassa area media staff did some Herculean efforts to try to get that system back up and running. Another announcement is that the Western Towns Association has its meeting scheduled for the twenty-eighth, this Thursday. That meeting is going to be at the town of Ween, Town Hall, there at the corner of N and M. The address is two-two-four-one-three-zero, County Road M. Lunch starts at six-thirty E in the evening, and the meeting will start at seven o'clock. And also, with the, I'll bring that up next. Any other announcements? Supervisor Zhang.
Just two quick things, just want to use this opportunity to acknowledge Monk Heritage Month for April. And the second thing is, I guess it's a question for Chairman Gibbs and Administrator Leonard, is if we can get an update on the current employee status, or the CEO status at North Central Healthcare, whether it's a closed session or open session eventually. Not saying for the next meeting, but eventually.
We'll put that on the request, absolutely. Any other announcements and/or requests? Supervisor Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna request an update on the ARPA fund requests. I believe the deadline was April first for the website, is that correct?
That is correct. We'll, we did have an overview at HR Finance and Properties, if you look at that agenda and that recording, there is an overview and it's in the package of requests.
Thank you.
Any other announcements or requests? Seeing none, we are down to item number E nineteen. Who wishes to? Supervisor Seefelt made the motion. Supervisor Zhang with a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Everybody, please proceed to vote. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.